I call the meeting of the Red Oak Independent School District Board of Trustees to order at 6:31 PM. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. All board members are present with the exception of Dr. Shaw and Mr. Anderson. Mr. Knott, would you give, lead the invocation?
Father, we just thank you for this time we're able to gather here. Father, as board as the folks of the community, Father, everyone involved in this school district. Father, we can have like minds. Father, we can do what's best for the children here. Fathers, we just try to help them make it through life. Father, to get an education, have an understanding. But Father, we know that the growth we're having, we've got to do something. Father, to expand where these children can learn. Father, we thank you for hearing us. Just give us the wisdom and the understanding to make the right decisions. Thank you for everything, Lord Jesus, amen.
Amen. Father, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, first on our agenda is the superintendent's report, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Sanford.
Okay, thank you all for being here, we appreciate that. You taking the time to come out, I know it's a little chilly outside, so we do appreciate those in attendance. Under my report today, what we're going to do is have the Citizens Facility Planning Committee present their recommendation for bond election. And we have Mr. Brian Bell and Mr. Gabe Garcia is going to be doing the presentations for us. So at this time, I'll turn that over to you gentlemen.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce myself first. My name is Gabriel Garcia. I am a resident of Red Oak for several years now. I have two children in the district. I have a high school junior, I'm a proud band parent. And I have a fifth grader at Wooden Elementary. And just wanted to thank the board for taking the time to hear us out, and wanted to thank my fellow committee members for all their time and efforts in this process. And I'll turn it over to Brian.
Alright. Thanks, sir. We have a third member that was supposed to present with us tonight. Ms. Tally Ward is a business owner and parent here in Red Oak. Unfortunately, as a business owner, things happen, and she was not able to be here. But Gabe and I are presenting, she put in just as much work, so I do want to have on the record to thank her as well. I am Brian Bell, probably should have done that first. I have a student at Shields Kindergarten. I have a pre-K three at Little Hawks, and I am fourth grade teacher at Red Oak Elementary. So I know Gabe is a business professional. Keep in mind, I hang out with four-year-olds, I mean, not four-year-olds, sorry, ten-year-olds most of the day. So I may have a little different style than him. But with that said, we would like to get started. First thing is the actual process of the committee. That was a community-driven process. You know, the district cabinet brought us together and then pretty much set us free with information. So we're going to get more into that. The Citizens Facility Planning Committee, made of Red Oak ISD staff and community members, was formed to assess and prioritize Red Oak ISD's current and long-term facility capital project needs. The committee does present a diverse perspective of our community, and we'll elaborate on that for just a second. There were forty-eight members. We dropped four due to attendance issues. We have parents with students ranging from, like myself, pre-K all the way to seniors, all the way to recent alumni, staff members from Red Oak ISD, alumni, I know we had a recent graduate in the committee, at least one that I know of, local business owners as well, other community members, and board-appointed members. So up to two each, total was ten. Multiple members cross into several of these categories, myself being one, Gabe being one, Tally being one. But a hundred percent are registered voters, which is very important to us, so that is a good thing. The committee members list is shown here. If anybody here tonight, I know we have a few, I'd like to recognize them for their time and effort as well, so if they would please stay. Alright, thank you very much, that is our list. Information on those folks and everything tonight can also be found on the committee website, which is linked on the Community tab on the ROI SD page website. So the process, very open and transparent. We had administrative staff members, campus principals, outside consultants, in advisory committee, advisory capacity, rather. And this is kind of what we did, we gathered information, lots of meetings, PowerPoints. They kind of told us how everything was going. We had a lot of feedback each meeting, we would do some discussion, voting, a lot of table discussions. We review potential projects at another meeting, so they kind of presented, you know, here's some things you can look at, here's some things that could go on the bond, et cetera. Then we ranked them. We got with our tables, made lists, we put them on the wall, looked at everyone's list. If it was on the list for everyone, we're pretty much good. We discussed all the things that not everyone had, and then we did some consensus voting. The meetings were kind of structured as you see here. I'm not going to go through all of those, but the committee was about six hundred hours total. I will say that six hundred hours is man-hours, I'm sorry, is meeting hours. Several nights, myself, Gabe, lots of us would be there, well past the meeting hours, just discussing, getting stories, just trying to get as much information as we could. Past that, we are going to move on. We're going to show you what we learned from those meetings. So this is kind of overview of the next few slides, and how they will be laid out. Information gathering overview. So Gabe's going to take over and kind of run us through some of these slides.
So, we're actually going to start with a representation of historical tax rates for the district. Since the 2016-2017 tax year, fiscal year, you'll see that the MNO, or Maintenance and Operating, tax rate was a dollar seventeen. Our interest and sinking fund rate was thirty-seven cents. Total tax rate of a dollar fifty-four. As the years have gone by and through many efforts through not only yourselves, but our state legislators as well, rates have started to come down, and I'm sure everybody here will say thank you very much for that. I know it takes great effort, and I know part of that also is that our property values are actually increasing as well. So, but overall, over the past three years, our tax rate has actually decreased. Wanted to give a visual representation of what that looks like. So the overall trend obviously is going down, but to be able to see those trend lines on the top of that graph there, coming down is very good to see. And although the, that green trend line seems to be flat, that is, that represents the trend for the INS tax rate, which has decreased as well, although not as significantly. During our first session, the Ms. Sanford, Sanford actually presented to us the results of the facilities survey that was issued or done through, at May of last year, at the end of the school year, which is, I think, how many of us committee members volunteered to get on this committee. What was interesting to us when this was presented to us is seventy-two percent of respondents were unaware that the tax rate has actually been decreased. And interestingly enough, again, many of the committee members echoed this very much. So we wanted to take a moment and discuss the fiscal responsibility that we feel that the district has exercised. Over the past few years, we've made efforts to pay down our debt early. And from the information that was given to us by August of this year, about seven million dollars in debt will have been retired early, which is rather significant. That also is saving the taxpayers about five hundred thousand dollars in interest payments. So thank you to you all and to the business office for managing the debt well. In addition to that, over the few, over the past few years, the district has acquired elementary school sites, potentially, for potential use for that. There have been upgrades to the Shuttman and Red Oak High School lighting, which has a financial impact to energy costs and the reductions for that across the district. There have been several HVAC system upgrades and maintenance, practice facilities, and installation of a new turf field coming up here at Goodlow Stadium, and a state-of-the-art Ag Barn, which I hear is the talk of the area. It's amazing.
If you could also talk into the mic a little, because we're having a hard time online hearing.
How about, is that better?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, now I mumble anyway, so maybe they'll pick it up better. All this has been done through maintenance tax notes, budget planning, the funds from the partnership with City of Red Oak for Live Oak, and that exchange. Again, this was just us wanting to present that we see that the district handles our money, our tax, well. So thank you for that as well. So, again, during the first meeting, I think many of us in the committee were blown away by the actual growth rate that is presented here. The city of Red Oak is, has had a growth rate of seventy-seven point three percent since nineteen ninety. That's impressive. It is actually a higher rate than Collin County put together. Ellis County is fifty-six percent as a whole, and the state of Texas has grown forty-seven percent. Well, I'm sure many of us have all seen that in the news, and, but just to go past the headlines, that is phenomenal growth for the state. Our projected housing increase of, excuse me, for, since twenty twenty and into twenty twenty-four, we're expecting over eight thousand new residents. The projected people per single-family house, two point nine five people. So for me, that translates to at least one student per new single-family house. Wow. And then for all of our apartments, and there were townhomes, again, two and a half people per, and still, to me, rounded up, you're still looking at at least another student per unit. And speaking of population growth, their student population, again, a visual representation here, since two thousand sixteen up to this year, about five hundred and fifty students. And it took me a minute this afternoon. I believe the junior class this year is about five hundred or so, five hundred and fifty, again, because of my son. That's a growth of one junior class. Okay, so that's pretty significant. We reviewed the previous bond elections. In reviewing that, we learned that the two thousand six bond for ninety million dollars was defeated. We also learned that the bond in two thousand seven, which was ninety-seven million dollars, passed and actually is what has given us where we are today. But as wonderful as this building is, I didn't realize, again, that time goes by so fast. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're about twelve years on this building? Twelve years of age? My son is eleven, so time goes by fast. Again, that bond contributed to this high school and to Shields Elementary. And then the previous bond in two thousand seventeen was defeated. We also learned that, on average, a district of our size typically has a bond election every five to six years. We have gone fifteen years without a past bond. And I'm going to have Brian take a moment here and present. Do it? Oh. My, my bad, excuse me. We want to take a minute and go over what the two thousand seventeen bond election included. It included a new middle school. It included CTE high school classrooms. It included classroom technology, transportation, renovation, lighting maintenance, and many other things, as well as a renovation to Goodlow Stadium. I went back and I looked at those numbers. And the middle school at the time had a proposed budget of forty-four million dollars. The high school CTE classrooms had a proposed budget of fifteen and a quarter million dollars. And improvements to transportation in Goodlow, one point seven million, and six point one eight million dollars respectively. That was the bulk of the bond that we, for the seventy-four million dollars. Now, Brian is going to...
I, I don't want to go back slides and confuse everything, but there was one thing I want to talk about on the slide just before the population student growth data. When we're discussing the potential population growth of Red Oak, that's from the City of Red Oak data. None of that includes any areas other than the City of Red Oak. So there's also more growth than that that we can see, England Heights, Ovila, and Pecan Hill. Thank you, that's why we, that's why there's two of us. So just emphasize that. One thing the consultants told us, that when he said it, I was like, I need to see data, like, I need to know that for sure. He said, you know, they told us every five to six years, a district of our size has a bond election, whether passed or failed, but it's, you know, it's the necessity of a district our size. So I, I didn't see any information and everything they gave us, so I said, I'm going to dig into that. So I found the Texas Bond Review Board, which is a state of Texas entity, and TEA school data, of course, I don't access that. And I found that TEA classifies our district as other central city. That's important because when you're comparing districts, you know, you may find a district of our size, but they cover six hundred square miles in a county in West Texas. So we focused on these. We have districts similar in our size, some a little bigger, a couple a little smaller. But we went back and we looked at their bond history. And so this is pretty interesting. I did ask, do you guys have this as like an appendix or full printouts? Okay, I asked for that, I just want to make sure. Just some information on this data that I dug up. If you kind of look, all the white points, the white backgrounds, those are approved bonds. If you see there, you'll see Red Oak, second to last. And what that is, is from nineteen ninety-nine, which is far back as the digital information goes, which is twenty years, I feel like that's enough, to the current, two thousand twenty-one. As far as the amount, total amount, which you see over there way on the right side, we are second to last. We fall ahead of Galveston. But I would like to note that Galveston, several articles I found, where Galveston receives federal money at least twice during this time, which would move them up almost to the top. So really, that puts us last. There is one other gap larger than the fourteen-year gap we're currently seeing, but it follows the biggest bond on the page by more than double. So Longview there has a big gap, but they had a big bond. I assume, I don't know what they were up to at that time, but anyways, that's, that's the other largest gap, besides the fourteen-year gap that we've seen here in Red Oak. So just, just interesting, right? I heard them say that, I wanted to see it for myself. The average does come out to five point six two years for a district similar to ours, classified the same as ours, and, you know, similar in our size. The only thing I did not compare was growth, which that was probably a whole nother headache. But you look at some of those cities, some of them are in Ellis County, so we know they at least have that Ellis County growth at fifty, fifty-six, fifty-two, somewhere in there. We can get back to it if we need to. But anyways, this, this was the interesting part to me, and where I really dug into the information we were given. Which, if you look at that fourteen, fifteen-year gap we're going on, you can see the results. Everything you hear, see here is our current conditions, is our capacity of our schools. According to our consultants, capacity starts to go not good at around ninety-two percent. So we highlighted anything over ninety-two percent. This is measured in functional capacity, which is essentially, how many kids can a teacher get in a classroom and function? And have a productive day with education, and make sure those kids are learning what they're supposed to. Sorry, I'm breathing. But the interesting part is, you can see all the schools that are already over that ninety-two percent threshold. And you see two thousand twenty-six projections, we're well over that threshold. Two thousand thirty, we were told, ten-year projections can be like throwing darts. So you do see some of those numbers come down a little bit, but they're not as accurate. And as the mayor pointed out in their first presentation to us, we can only see housing additions in our area that they've applied for or approved. We can't see what builders are planning on doing. So that kind of goes into that as well, so we'll see. So, quick transition, we're going to go back to Gabe for a little more on some of the other things we noticed.
So again, we're speaking to things that were presented to the committee for us to learn. Even as a parent of a high school student, I was unaware of how large and the breadth of perspective provided by the CTE program the district has. We're not, I'm not going to name every single program there, but needless to say, it was, again, surprising. What was more surprising to me was, and to many on the committee, was that we were actually transporting students, CTE students, from the high school to the CTE building at the middle school campus. I also learned that that's been going on for quite a while. Especially, I guess, it's probably been going on since the time that we've moved the high school here. So the current CTE building, the middle school, actually has certain high school programs there, as well as middle school CTE courses, as well as regular middle school courses. And specific to the high school CTE program and students, the fact that we were spending eighteen, or that they are spending eighteen to twenty-five minutes on total round trip transit time was eye-opening, again. And to be able to do that in a forty-five-minute period was, again, quite shocking. Anecdotally, we had heard from CTE teachers on the committee that more often than not, they would be coming in the evenings to open up the facilities for those students to help make up those times in order to meet their certificate hours requirements. So again, things that we were learning through this process. We actually got onto the field at Goodlow during our facilities tour. I have a note here that I'm hoping to kind of get a laugh out of everybody, but Goodlow was built in nineteen seventy-seven. It is two years older than I am, and it, both of us have seen better days. This is our first impression to the world, to the community, to any visitors to Red Oak. And it is not the best impression out there. I don't want to, well, I guess, the conditions of the locker rooms, the restrooms are, do not serve the current, any spectators who are there. We have Americans with Disability Act compliance issues. The concession stands, we, basically, bottom line, we make the entire stadium work. Is it what we deserve? Is it what we should be doing? Probably not. So, as far as... So as far as ADA requirements are concerned, for any, anybody who requires that type of access, the slopes going up to the stands are not the right angle. The visitor stands are even worse for that. The ability for somebody to get from the gates to the stands is a big impediment as well. Yes, with the visitor stands. We also, anecdotally, have heard that the press box elevator has many times failed with riders in it. So we do have some issues there as far as ADA requirements are concerned. Visitors parking lighting, where the visitors currently park, we, I know on Friday night football games, we turn on lights at the old baseball field and the tennis courts in order to at least indirectly light up that area for safety issues. Our track has only seven lanes. Currently, most other tracks are eight lanes. The track requires resurfacing. It was eye-opening, I didn't even realize it, because usually I go from the gate to the stand, find my seat, and I don't get to see anything from another perspective. So again, I was, I keep wanting to say eye-opening, but I need to find another adjective. But it was, it was surprising. And right down the parking lot there, we went to our transportation facility. Did not, I knew the, what I would call the bus barn was there since the live oak transaction, transition happened. Was unaware that the extensiveness of any flooding issues that were actually occurring there. To see the physical state of that building, one, when we were doing our facility tour and just one busload of committee members was in that collective area, it was already too small. There was, everybody was crammed into one area. The fact that there's only two restrooms in that entire facility for, I believe it's sixty people to use, leave a lot to be desired. Some training, or, excuse me, lack of ability for our drivers and everybody who are in our transportation group to be able to do computer-based training, not conducive to that. The parking lot, well, it's gravel. It's a gravel parking area for our buses and our white fleet. There was a lack of maintenance bays, lack of ability for fleet washing, insufficient storage. And we noted that our ridership from two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year to earlier this year is an increase of thirty-nine percent. And that the miles that we are driving has increased nineteen percent as well in that same timeframe. And we are almost done with our first portion here. Other items that were noticed during our facility tours and in our conversations was our elementary school playgrounds, not ADA accessible. The equipment is outdated and old. And basically, not, no longer supported by the manufacturers. There are some where slides have actually come off the equipment, and we've taken safety issues to make not repairs or replacements, but just to kind of keep students from being able to go through that leftover hole. We learned that because Goodlow is our only track, that our middle school and high school students, track students, share that track. And I can only imagine what can happen if soccer was practicing at the same time. We learned, and I think you mentioned that for our high school, and then, excuse me, high school could use additional indoor practice area. Brian, I think you mentioned that you saw the color guard practicing while we were, or winner guard in the lunchroom, the cafeteria area of this building. I know from a band perspective, when it's raining, I know they go back and practice in the band hall, but to have some area where they could actually practice for marching would be beneficial as well. Not every building has an energy management system, which we've learned, and I know through my own employer, saves us a good deal of money. And we were reminded that because the middle school has multiple buildings, that the students go from building to building to building, or have the possibility to do that. But they do it in the open. So from a safety standpoint, as a parent who is about to have his second child in the middle school, having those exterior entryways and pathways presents a safety issue and is a safety concern personally. And then also, I understand that, you know, due to its capacity as, or overcapacity right now, overpopulation, that you put a bunch of anybody, a bunch of people in one, one building, tempers can flare, anything can happen. So I was not aware of just how overpopulated the school was. So that kind of gets us into intermission here, and wanted to open up to any questions that you all may have on what we just presented.
I have a question. This deals with the committee. How many members of the committee live outside of Ellis County?
Outside of Ellis County?
Mm-hmm.
Beth is telling, Beth kind of has the statistics on the committee. Saying one? Okay, so we have one that lives on the Dallas County side of Lynn Heights.
Well, that's an interesting thing that they create debt for us. You know, I don't think they should be included, but that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
One employee? Was that a board-appointed member by chance? Okay.
And on the M and O, who sets that rate, the school or the state?
You know, I got into some research about that last night because I had a similar question. Honestly, that's not something that was presented to us, so I'd have to yield to our consultants or Dr. Johnson. She's asking, "Who sets our M and O tax rate?"
That portion.
Up until two thousand nineteen, the district set a tax rate. They actually, the district can set it now, but in two thousand nineteen through House Bill Three, the state, if property values were increasing, state reduced it. But the district can even probably reduce it or change it to some extent and take it back up if they want to, a few pennies based on an election-type thing.
How about down?
Uh, could go down.
We voted it down three times in the past three years, in which you voted on, yes ma'am?
No.
Yes, ma'am. We have reduced the M and O over the last three years down, yes.
All right.
So I have another question. You know, in twenty seventeen, there was a bond that was defeated.
Yes, ma'am.
And that bond was looking for money for a middle school on the west side.
Yes, ma'am.
And in twenty seventeen, the school had no land under contract or purchased or anything on the west side.
Okay.
Property on the west side at that time has no utilities. And that was one of the considerations when the school board decided to purchase land over there. Utilities cost a million dollars.
Okay.
So asking for a bond and not knowing what the school looks like and not knowing where the land was gonna be, and whether it had utilities or not, meaning water and sewer and electricity.
Yes.
It was kind of a blind situation, and you can't put a price on something that you don't know what you're buying.
And you're saying back.
That was part of the reason that was defeated.
Okay.
We also had an empty school at that time, which since then has been a good thing. It's been sold.
Yes, ma'am.
And has created some income. So forty-four million dollars was projected for the school then, but we didn't, for the middle school.
Yes, ma'am.
But we didn't know what land, and we didn't know what the building was gonna look like. So that was just kind of up in the air, and I think that's what the citizens saw. They really didn't know exactly what they were buying.
Sure, I understand.
So that was part of the consideration of the bond defeat.
Okay.
We don't have those issues this go around.
I think it's also noteworthy to bring up that the last bond was only defeated by thirty-six votes. It's so important. Please register to vote, please go vote. There are so many of our students and future generations of students that will come through these doors that will make a big impact on this world, and we need to have the correct facilities and teachers that fill those facilities to help set these kids off into the world. Please, just go vote. Whichever way you want to vote is fine with me, but please go to the polls and vote.
Yeah, this, on that topic, something we found interesting was art, just knowing the population of Red Oak and our, actually our school district, and seeing that only less than two thousand people voted in two thousand seventeen, either way, on the bond, so.
The information about the CTE and moving the middle school children or the high school children, the middle school over to the high school, because the middle school, it will be in reverse. If you put the CTE at the high school, you'll have middle school children being transported to the high school.
No, ma'am, so the current CTE building already houses the CTE for the middle school? He, I remember, he was a little, but, so those classes should remain there at that building.
So you're gonna have two is what's gonna happen, we're gonna have...
One, well, we'll have the appropriate...
I'm not saying it's bad, I'm saying you're gonna have two.
Well, yeah, we'll have the appropriate amount of middle school CTE programs, you know, and the district decides the programs, you know, but...
Huge what they offer.
Well, the high school is huge, I'm not, I honestly don't, we didn't get any specifics about the middle school CTE programs, but I did. In that list we put up of the high school we just found from the district website, so.
So we're gonna have a duplicate, because the middle children would then come to the high school for what they wanted, and instead of the high school.
Well, I, I think that that goes back to how we presented that the board and the cabinet are fiercely responsible. I don't foresee us saying we're gonna have a big old shop over here for high school and a big old shop over here for middle school. I think the middle school kids, and this is an assumption, this is personal, I'm not representing the board in this, but the assumption would be that, you know, the district's gonna be responsible enough to provide, you know, classes leading up to the bigger classes in high school for the middle school kids. You know, the middle schools might have some small welding, you know, equipment and et cetera, whereas you don't get to do the bigger stuff till you get into high school.
The intro to, the intro to construction stuff actually occurs at the middle school level, and they will not, they, as I understand it, because my son has been through there, will, is housed only at the middle school, but not, but it's not at the high school level.
That's just one example, remember, I have littles, so I'm not there yet, but, but yeah, I mean, I see the point.
So in the playground, what's really wrong with our playground for those that don't?
Other than the dated, the equipment itself is dated, it's all about the American Disabilities Act. All of the playgrounds, you go out, there are sidewalks leading to or near the playground. There are cases where you've got to cross some grass, which, you know, for certain disability students, that's not, you know, it's not, I don't wanna say acceptable, but it's not ideal. Also, all the playgrounds have a border, so there's something you have to go up and over. And I think, you know, we didn't get a ton of detail, but they told us we're gonna fix things like that to make it more accessible to disability, disabled students.
So how many hours a day do our elementary children go outside?
Go outside?
Mm-hmm.
At my school, all day. Because we have recess, so we are fortunate enough to have a district where we get thirty full minutes of recess. That's not the case at my previous district. So that is staggered on that playground all day long. I can't speak for other schools, I'm sure there's someone here that can, but...
Talking about our schools, so the playground is used all day long?
Yes, ma'am.
By the children?
Yes. And those special needs classes come and go throughout the day, you know, based on how many kids, grade levels, stuff like that.
So in the middle school, the question is, the children move from class to class and building to building?
Yes, ma'am.
So a safety issue, how many in the past, how many safety issues have we had with that setup? Have we had happen, things that were not desirable?
Well, I can't speak to the actual statistics that actually happen, to, incidences that actually happen. But overall, again, having had these, this concern brought up in my own area of, in my own building through my employer. Many times, we've taken multiple exterior access points, and we've shut them down in order to be able to have a more secure building and have, and reduce the number of accessible ingress and egress points outside of emergency egress. It was actually a concern that were brought to us, to managers from our teams, and we addressed it. When that happened to me, it opened my eyes to what the potential could be at the middle school here. Knowing that now we don't just have this sixth-grade campus, now that it's three different buildings, and the students are going back and forth, your security is only as good as a person opening the door. So. Happened this year.
What happened?
A parent came in the building from not the front door to come into the building to retrieve their child. They were upset about something, but they came in unannounced, unaware, because a child let them in to the door. It happened this year, less than six weeks ago.
A parent and a child?
No.
No?
A child opened the door and let a parent in. It was a parent who was upset and did not come through the proper channels, did not come through the proper door, and came through the back door. It's a problem.
Just a question for you. Outside the new proposal for the gym, you know, what else is included, you know, under the high school renovation? You know, we know the CTE building in the practice gym, is that encompassed in that section? Is there anything else in there?
We can get to that through the subsequent slides.
No, there's, technically, under that technical statement, no, it's the CTE building, the high school practice gym facility. The other things are listed under the other, the other topics.
Okay.
Am I, I wanna make sure, I'm not crazy, right? We've been diving into this a lot. I'm not wrong. Mr., okay, I'm pretty sure.
I have a question back to the middle school kids going from building to building. They're basically outside, am I correct? I mean, because I have been there a few times, and it seems like, it's like there's just a horde of kids coming, and I know that there are staff members that try to keep an eye out. But some are running, some are jumping, some are going this way, and I'm trying to recall, is it, if it's pouring down rain, are there covers out there, or?
There are now.
They're covered walkways.
They're, they are covered. Typically, what you're having is there's some classes that are on the back of that CTE building and with ban, and a lot of our sixth-grade students transi- and with band and a lot of our sixth grade students transition from the sixth grade building all the way over to the furthest point on the campus, which is at the band building and then some of your CTE prerequisite classes, pre-construction classes and stuff that occur on the backside of that facility. But the, the, they are covered, however, when there's a, the masses of them that are going across through the, through the middle school gym, through that corridor, out the other corridor. Most of them skip the corridor and just stay outside and go across or go around the back and, and then come into the building.
But, but even if it's like covered, if, if it's a blowing rain, they're getting wet.
Correct, sure.
Does anyone, uh, have any other questions about the, kind of the findings of the committee or that part so far? Alright, I feel like the, the fourth grade teacher, I mean, like, we need to stand up, do some jumping jacks, stretch a little, but, uh, anybody?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we get a restroom break?
Yeah, sure. I mean, uh, you gotta sign in, sign out?
Okay, then in between part one and part two, we're gonna take a five minute break.
Okay, awesome.
That's a good idea. You better look at the date, the time, huh? See when that's up.
Well, these lights kinda put you out, don't they?
I can't. Can you imagine the heat that do you have in these?
That doesn't mean y'all can't talk louder into them. Y'all can be louder, I just can't turn them off. Um, for the most part, y'all are heard fine on stream, so if you talk a little louder, the people in here will be able to hear better.
Thank you.
Oh, I think it was somebody who was talking over here. Anybody who talks that's on a mic is not getting heard.
No, these guys.
No, these guys. Takes from people watching it, saying they couldn't hear.
Could hear these two presenters, Mr. Bell and Mr. Garcia.
So that's, that's when she stopped and asked him to get.
Yeah.
But I think we're good now.
We should be. I've been, I've had the stream pulled up on a separate thing with headphones.
One minute.
Timekeeper.
Okay.
We have one minute until we resume.
It's sad that more people don't come out to hear this, but it's gonna be their dollars, you know?
Yeah. I mean, you post it and everything you give.
I know, I know.
Yeah, that's what, this is what? Hopefully a lot of folks will watch online.
Well, that's a good, you know, that is a thought. I bet they do and being cold, I bet they're gonna do that. Yeah.
Come on, Beth, cut me out.
We're back.
Okay, we will resume our meeting now if everybody can find their seats.
You might wanna turn to your microphone.
Okay, Mr. Bell, if you'd like to go ahead and get started.
Hello, there we go. Awesome, thank you. Uh, we were during break reminded that I was incorrect and I, I felt like I was incorrect. Uh, we had a question about high school renovations, uh, from Mr. Knight. There are two other things on there. Uh, one is the seating in the competition gym. Uh, it's, it's in there, it's kind of in some other, you know, C and E type, type projects. Um, and then also the tile floor throughout the high school. Uh, they're trying to put in a newer tile. Uh, they say that this floor is just not adequate anymore. Uh, it's a newer tile that requires less waxing and, you know, maintenance and such, so is that?
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Alright, well with that, we're gonna continue with, uh, what we're proposing. Oh, there's clicker. So, what's proposed? I'm just gonna read this. Uh, the total for all projects that the Citizens Facility Planning Committee deemed necessary to fulfill district needs and prepare for future growth is two hundred thirty million, one hundred thousand dollars. My students will be happy I got that right. I get on to them. Uh, quick overview again, uh, we'll do overview, uh, then go into detail about each project, uh, as briefly as we can. The bond program recommendation includes a new CTE building on the high school campus grounds, which is somewhere near here. Uh, high school additions and renovations, which we've kinda discussed and we'll get into in detail. Uh, a new middle school, which we already do have the land for, uh, the bond, uh, I'm sorry, the board approved the acquisition of that land in December, uh, and the purchase is upcoming. Yeah, so, uh, renovations and classroom additions for two elementary school campuses. Uh, a pretty much fully renovated Goodlow Stadium and we'll go into what, what that means. Athletic improvements at the high school, uh, some, some facility athletic needs. Uh, a new transportation center, elementary playgrounds, uh, and some more energy management upgrades, which of course save us money. So, to get us started. Oh, oh, okay, sorry. Uh, the bond, uh, program recommendation addresses district growth, uh, which as we saw, or we'll see, or we saw, I'm sorry, almost a thousand students total at all those facilities by twenty twenty-six. Uh, safety and security, we're trying to lessen the crowd, of course, uh, and student access to facilities. Uh, so just kind of, we need more spaces for our students to carry out their, their activities of all kinds. Uh, aging facility conditions. Of course ADA compliance is important, uh, must be met, uh, so we have some issues with that. Uh, and then upgrades for playgrounds and fields, so that's kind of, uh, the reasons that we selected the things that we did. Uh, here is the line item view of the projects. Uh, as we move forward, so you don't have to flip back and forth, these numbers will be on the top of those slides as well, uh, so you'll know. It's kind of the same exact list we just went through. Uh, more specifically, you'll see, uh, with the middle school, we'll include some security here at the current middle school, something we kinda just talked about. Uh, and we will get into these more. I don't wanna double up on you guys. So, Gabe's gonna get us started, uh, with these, uh, topics.
Okay, we are proposing, uh, a new CTE building to the high school campus. The projected cost for that is twenty-five and a half million dollars. This will address, uh, reduce or, this will help reduce the instructional time lost in the transportation of students from the high school campus to the middle school campus. Um, and, um, that's the, uh, that's the major goal to, for this project, to be able to, to gain that instructional time back. Uh, no exact configuration or layout, uh, has been determined. That would be determined later on, uh, after the bond passes. Um, high school additions and renovations, uh, indoors practice space, uh, and gym. Um, our understanding was that this particular space was, uh, value out, uh, from the initial uh, plan of the high school. Uh, this addresses, again, uh, gives us a, a third gym, uh, third space for, for indoor practice use. Uh, it could be used for band, for cheer, for, uh, for any number, you, you name it. I'm pretty sure we'll figure out how to put it in there. We are proposing or asking that the, the, um, the board approve, uh, a new middle school. Uh, at eighty-five million dollars, this, uh, middle school would serve the west side of the district. Again, you, um, kind of what Brian alluded to, you exercise the option for the purchase of the forty-seven and a half acres, uh, at the last board, uh, meeting in December thirteenth. Uh, it would include track, fields and tennis courts. Again, exact configuration and layout would be determined later on. And as a reminder, part of this, um, what we're asking for is to increase security, uh, uh, at the middle school in terms of basically enclosing the walkways between the buildings.
I do, I do wanna interrupt, sorry. Uh, Gabe told me not to forget and I forgot and now I think he's forgot. But we wanna highlight the, the cost of the middle school. Uh, compared to the two thousand seventeen bond that, that failed, uh, you'll see that's eighty-five million. Uh, this was included in the two thousand seventeen bond and the entirety of that bond was seventy-four million. Um, and I believe was it forty-five? Five years ago, the cost of this was forty-five million. So, it's important to note that, you know, prices don't go down. So, uh, it's just something we, we wanted to highlight as a committee a, as well.
Thank you very much for that. I did, I did, uh, forget to say that. Bringing back the, I'm sorry, did? Uh, bringing back the facility survey, uh, from May of last year. The coincidentally, the, the committee came to the same conclusion that the respondents did from that survey. Uh, the respondents from that survey, um, concluded that sixty, oh, I'm sorry, sixty-two percent, sixty-two point seven percent of respondents concluded, uh, that they would rather, uh, have a new middle school built rather than trying to renovate or do additions to the current campus. Uh, we are proposing a, um, addition in renovations to Wooden Middle School, I'm sorry, Wooden Elementary. The addition would be a, a new cafeteria and kitchen area and then taking the current kitchen and cafeteria area and being able to convert that space to eight new classrooms, which, um, comes out to, I believe, a hundred and sixty students, uh, that you'd be able to increase the capacity by doing that. Uh, part of that project would also include a new road around the back to loop around the building, uh, for better, uh, traffic flow. Uh, as, um, I've seen in the, um, first full week of school this past year, that was, uh, kind of interesting how that got untangled. So that's to, to Wooden Elementary. Uh, we are proposing also that the same thing happened to East Ridge Elementary. Again, a, a new cafeteria and kitchen area, taking that current area and adding eight new classrooms to increase the student population or capacity by a hundred and sixty students. And it too would have, uh, a new road, uh, completing the loop around the building. Again, for better improvement or better, uh, traffic flow.
Uh, you know, sorry, we, we talk capacity, of course, um, you know, and that, that's, that's the main issue we punch. But also these principals at these schools told us on our tours that, that moving that cafeteria over is gonna help with noise pollution. Uh, as you can see where the current, one of the schools does have the enclosed, uh, doors, windows areas, but you'll see that, that cafeteria sits right in the middle of a bunch of classrooms. And she, they, they told us those teachers, you know, have, have trouble with instruction during those times, so that move is, is a dual purpose.
And again, we wanted to cite the survey, um, and again, the committee came to the same conclusion, um, but not because of the survey, because I wanna, I guess I haven't pointed this out. We looked at that survey one time and that was during our first meeting. We did not reference it in any of our meetings subsequent after that. So, coincidentally, we came to the same, uh, same con, uh, same conclusion that the facility survey presented. So fifty-eight point nine percent of the respondents in the last May survey, um, indicated they had a preference for renovating, uh, existing elementary school buildings. Um, what you see here is a, a capacity analysis and, uh, with proposed elementary renovations, uh, we are projected to be able to, uh, meet the enrollment demands for elementary schools for the next five to ten years. Uh, moving forward, uh, with Goodlow Stadium, for, uh, full renovation of, of the stadium uh, would include new dressing rooms, concessions, restrooms, a new press box, um, added track lane, uh, so an eighth lane to the track and also basically a new track, uh, be, as for resurfacing. Uh, new seating on the visitor's side, additional seating on the home side, additional parking, additional, uh, circulation roads, uh, new visitors, bus and officials parking area and a new scoreboard. That was an interesting game. Again, wanted to show the survey. Again, wanted to show the survey results from May, and that is overwhelming support, uh, from all the survey takers. Eighty-one percent, nearly eighty-one percent supported, uh, renovations or additions to, to Goodlow Stadium. Uh, high school and athletic, uh, renovations. We are proposing a new JV track and turf field, which would be next to our existing, uh, turf practice fields. We're hoping that this would be able to keep, uh, most of our high school athletes on the high school campus. Uh, so with the new track, uh, our, uh, track, high school track team members would be able to stay on the high school campus and not have to use Goodlow. A new track and field will, I'm sorry, a new field would actually allow for, uh, additional capacity for any sporting events, uh, throughout the community, uh, I imagine. Uh, but also, um, allow us to, to have dual, uh, purpose. Basically, if there's a soccer game and a football game or two soccer games, it can all, uh, all work out together. It, it would resolve scheduling conflicts. Potential to our hosting tournaments or and/or, uh, band competitions. Uh, that could be a, a band practice field and then they could go and do their performance, uh, at the main stadium. Uh, we are looking to upgrade the tennis courts. We're proposing to upgrade the tennis courts. If I, I'm, if I remember correctly, the tennis courts are original to the, the campus here as well. So you're looking at, uh, tennis courts that are twelve years old and would appreciate some love and tender care. Uh, we are also proposing that the baseball and softball fields, that, that they be replaced with, turf field rather than the grass field that we have right now. Uh, in the long term, I think it's been demonstrated, um, in the industry that, uh, the turf is, uh, much more low, low maintenance than, uh, than a, a grass field. We are also asking the board to, um, approve or, uh, consider, uh, a new transportation facility. Uh, this facility would allow for larger, uh, bays. Uh, the facility itself would be larger. It'd give us more bays, uh, for maintenance of, of district owned vehicles. Uh, it would have paved parking and increased capacity. Uh, if I remember correctly, again, the original building and area supported, it was built for twenty school buses maybe. Uh, I'm sure we have my, many, many, many more, uh, buses currently in addition to our, um, our, our white fleet of vehicles. Uh, the facility would be moved further away from, uh, from the stadium area. There, it continued to have dual access between Louis Ritter and Bell's Chapel. And the project would include, uh, proper grading for better flood control, uh, to the back of that property.
Uh, we're going to get into the, uh, the financial part. Um, before, I, I feel like it, it, Gabe and I have, we have a lot of stats and information and, um, you know, a lot of things we're, we're, you know, it's our first time to do something like this, uh, that we're trying to get across. One of the things I feel like we're not doing a good job emphasizing is that everything we're talking about was our committee decided this. Um, the, the bond you see there, you know, it was, it was agreed upon and we had, you know, a lot of discussion, uh, but the, the committee backs us and, and what we're presenting tonight. And I had a point. Sorry, I lost it. Rambling. But, uh, really, it, it, that was it. The, so when we got into things and it seems like, you know, there's, there's several projects. Um, it was kind of like, you know, who are we as the committee to decide necessarily everything? Uh, and the way the new bonds are packaged, kind of gives us the opportunity to just, just put it to voters, you know? Let the voters decide, uh, and those, you know, we don't know, we, you know, we asked a lot of times, how's this going to be packaged? They, you know, clearly they've told us that's really up to the board and the lawyers and there's a lot of technical stuff involved. We kind of saw generally and, and what they told us, but, but the attitude of, of the committee was, let's put it out there, let the people decide, you know, what, what they support. So just wanted to say that before we got into this part. Um, public school finance, the fun stuff. Uh, so basically your tax rate, uh, for, for homeowners is split into two parts as far as it's concerned with the school district taxes. There's the M and O and the INS. We have the M and O on this side here, uh, which is basically our, our normal budget. It's what goes into our normal budget. Um, it's how we pay staff, uh, facility utility costs, classroom supplies and, and just routine maintenance. That's how we're able, uh, to pay for the things. We did show earlier, uh, just as a reminder, that out of that budget, uh, we were able to do some of the projects that needed to be done, that didn't get approved in the seventeen bond, uh, and some other things. So, uh, we've, again, feel like we're trying to be as responsible as possible, uh, as a board and as a district and trying to get as much done as we can, but it's just, you know, can't do it all. Uh, over here we have the INS, which is the one, the rate that is affected by your bond. Um, you know, and it covers voter approved bonds. So when we need new construction, we need facility upgrades, we need land, uh, buses, technology and equipment, generally we have to adjust this rate here. So we're going to kind of show you, uh, for the proposed amount, how that's going to be adjusted. So here is our, uh, and, and, you know, the committee doesn't come up with this. This is all from consultants, uh, and it just kind of how, what they projected. They did tell us, uh, projections are fairly conservative, uh, as, in, in all ways. So it's hard, it, it's projected on a lot of things, population growth being one. They didn't overshoot that. They, they think what they put in for this to get to this number is conservative and it will exceed, population growth will exceed that. Um, and, and other things like that. So we're always air, air on the side of caution with these numbers. Um, potential increase if the bond is passed, uh, you'll see our current rate is thirty-six cents and little change there, fifty-three, so thirty-six and a half cents. The increase would go up four cents, four, four and a tenth of a cent. So it's kind of hard to say these numbers and even though I teach it. So we're looking at the new INS would be forty cents, uh, and, you know, forty point six three cents, kind of how you see it, forty cents and a little more. The, uh, current rate with the M and O, which is our operating budget and our current bond, uh, rate is one point three two five six. So if we adjust that INS, as you'll see down here, I don't want to, I don't point into your eyes, so I'm going to back off the laser. Uh, the new INS rate combined with what we, the current M and O, uh, puts us at one point three six 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 cents. Uh, and that's the total tax rate that the district issue is to homeowners. So you'll see the slight increase there, which is the four cents. So it's a lot to take in. Uh, this table shows, uh, rates, it, it's listed by INS only. Don't, don't worry about that part of the M and O. It's, it's, it's sorted by INS. It's not sorted by overall. But you'll see amongst this list of districts where we were, our INS was at the bottom. We're not moving up very far. Uh, we always joke when we look at this, look at some of these places, Prosper Roy City, they are maxed out to what the state allows, which is the full fifty cents. So, uh, you know, take that for what it is. So what does this mean for a homeowner? This is the nitty gritty. How much are my taxes going to go up? You know, it's, it's the question, right? We all want to know. So this is at that projected rate, uh, with our projected growth being conservative. And that affects how much money we can bring in. You kind of look at this chart. So one thing you got to notice, you'll see these values instantly and even me, I had to learn this. When you look at this, this is your net taxable home value. So if you look, that is after your forty thousand dollar homestead exemption. Okay, so when you look at that three hundred and ten thousand dollars, uh, we, we kind of couldn't nail it down to official number. We think Red Oak average falls somewhere three to three fifty per home right now. Uh, and, and also note that's not necessarily real estate market. That is evaluation from the county. Uh, so we're looking at this three ten as our example. So if your house is three hundred and thou- three hundred fifty thousand dollar value with the county, uh, then you, and you have filed the homestead, none, you only get it if you file it. And the state upped that last year. I guess that's their little way of helping us out. Um, to forty thousand dollars, you're looking at a ten dollar fifty-nine cent increase per month. So here's another slide to kind of lay that out. So your, uh, your county appraisal district value is three hundred and fifty. You file for the homestead, that reduces your appraisal value to three hundred and ten thousand dollars and your monthly increase would be ten dollars and fifty-nine cents. So, uh, that's what it is. I, I considered a, a list of things that cost more than that, but, I mean, we're all educated here. We, we understand.
It's okay to be tacky sometimes.
I mean, like Netflix, iTunes, I mean, I was getting into it last night. I was like, no, let's just, people know, you understand. The, the dollar residence, sixty-five and older, this is important to note. Sixty-five and older, if you have filed a homestead, the dollar amount, the dollar amount of school taxes imposed on a residence homestead of a person sixty-five years of age or older cannot be increased. So no matter what the voters decide, above the amount paid in the first year of the person turned sixty-five, regardless of changes in tax rate or property value, unless of course significant improvements are made to the home, which of course, you know, that's significant improvements and lawyers. Uh, if you are sixty-five or older, you must file a homestead application at your appraisal district to receive that exemption. So if you filed that exemption, sixty-five or older, this vote will not affect or increase what you have going on. All right, so Gabe asked for this specifically. I'm going to let him cover it.
Again, we wanted to demonstrate this, uh, the district's financial responsibility and, and how it's exercised and how fiscal, fiscally responsible you all and the office of, uh, the CFO have been over, uh, over the years. So there are currently two bonds over the last twenty years. Uh, in twenty twenty, it was a bond for fourteen million dollars. The average length of that bond is twenty-three years. In two thousand and seven, for ninety-five million dollars, the average length of that bond is thirty years. However, these bonds have been refinanced, many of these have been refinanced several times to take advantage of the lower interest rates available in the market. As a result, the district and through, and the, and the board have saved taxpayers over sixty million dollars in interest payments. Uh, as you all approved, I believe in November, uh, there are going to be two series of bonds that will be paid off early. Uh, and then also have an immediate impact of saving, uh, taxpayers five hundred thousand dollars in interest payments. And then currently there's, uh, outstanding bond principal of little, oh, um, little under eighty-three million dollars after that payoff. Uh, if the bond election passes as proposed, uh, the new bonds would be issued this fall. Uh, they would be thirty-year bonds and, uh, the current interest rates as of last summer were two percent. I'm sure that they have gone up a little bit, but, uh, from everything we're seeing, but still manageable and still historically low. Uh, and then subsequent bond issues would be issued, uh, in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. And again, we wanted to, uh, emphasize what that impact would be. So, uh, any new potential tax increase, um, as a result of this vote passing and the new tax rate, a total tax rate of a dollar thirty-six, nearly a dollar thirty-seven, still has us below, uh, where we were in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal years. And again, just a quick reminder of, for that visual, that trend line overall would still continue to be, uh, pointing downwards.
All right, so, uh, we're close. Uh, we, uh, at the first meeting, uh, Mr. Anderson, uh, charged the board, as they say, or charged the committee, I'm sorry. So we kind of wanted to flip it around and charge the board back. Uh, so here we go. The Citizens Facility Planning Committee presents to Red Oak ISD School Board a twenty twenty-two bond recommendation based upon district needs totaling the amount of two hundred and thirty million, one hundred thousand dollars to include the following projects. New CTE building on the high school campus grounds, high school additions and renovations, new middle school on land that is already acquired, renovation and additions for two elementary campuses, fully renovated Goodlow Stadium, athletic improvements at the high school, new transportation center, elementary playgrounds and energy management upgrades. So that is our official proposal. Uh, we're going to quickly go through some voting information just for public knowledge, uh, then we'll have our second Q and A. Uh, first off, are you registered? Only registered voters in the RO Red Oak ISD boundary, uh, would be eligible to vote on any proposed bonds. The deadline to register, uh, for the May date that is the next available one to the school board, uh, is Thursday, April seventh, twenty twenty-two. So you got to get signed up before then. Not register. You can fill out voter registration at any Red Oak ISD campus. Uh, the cabinet has informed us they will, uh, we are going to have, basically with the new voter law, we can give them a sheet and everything is them from there. So, uh, fill out an application online at votetexas.gov is another option. Early voting for a May seventh election is April twenty-fifth through May third. Uh, not every day in there, I believe, the, the polls will be open. So locations and times vary. Official election day would be Saturday, May seventh, two thousand twenty-two, seven to seven. Uh, all of this information can be found on the Ellis County Elections website. So it's a little bit easier there. And, uh, just one more time, the committee, uh, I want to thank all of our members here, all of our members watching, uh, for all of their hours of work. Uh, anything that we referenced tonight, um, except for that little bit that I did myself, that research, uh, can be found on the committee website. Uh, all the presentations that we saw, all the consultant presentations that were presented to us, uh, from the city of, also the cities from Red Oak, Glen Heights, uh, can all be seen on this website, as well as a list of members that we saw earlier. Uh, we just encourage you, if you're out there and also board members, it, to go talk to these folks. They were all in the meetings. They know what's going on. Uh, you know, they'd be, be glad to talk to you about it. So. With that, you have anything before we go Q and A? All right, we'll slip into our Q and A too, and, and that's, that's, that would be it for us.
I have a question about the transportation building part of it. Was there any discussion with the committee? Because the way I'm understanding this right now, it, it's like a whole new transportation facility that we're.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, was there any talk of cost of renovations there versus a whole new facility?
Yes, there was. Um, there was, we just, it, the, the building's been there since two thousand and one. Uh, and it, it, the, the cost to, to, to repair it, fix it, anything like that. The, the building itself, just, we didn't value it was, it was worth it versus a full replacement. Now, the other thing to consider is that the proposed amount for that includes a lot of, uh, parking concrete. We're trying to go from the gravel to the concrete. So the new building itself may not be that full cost. So we had a, we, you know, we had a repair cost presented to us. And then we, from there, just kind of decided, you know, how much can we keep repairing something to make it usable? And then that combined with the flooding is really just the reason to just move it. It's the best option is what we considered.
But there, but y'all did discuss that.
Yes, it was, it was discussed. Um, and, you know, just the flooding is, is basically that whole area just needs to be revamped because of that, is, is, is our understanding.
So are you going to tear down, is the proposal to tear down the old, the building currently since it's, or what would we use it for? So are you gonna tear down, is the proposal to tear down the old, the building currently, since it's, or what would we use it for?
There was no speci- you know, I didn't even ask. I know the new building would be there, I would, that was an assumption I made, the old building would be gone? Yes, okay, so they're saying yes, yeah.
So what about Goodlow, renovation versus new?
Um, so it's hard because we did say full renovation, uh, which includes the, the visitor's side. The home side, we are able, even in what we're calling a full renovation, we are able to retain a good section of the stands. Uh, because we're trying to achieve the eight-lane track, uh, it's kind of gonna be a rework of the home stands. Uh, we gotta move some things back so that some rows we will lose, uh, and I believe that's kind of where the handicap seating is now. So it's kind of a full rework of the home side. It is absolutely a new scoreboard, absolutely, uh, a new press box. Uh, and the important part is the fieldhouse for the visiting, visiting team, the visitors' fieldhouse we have there now, which houses the, the visiting team, the officials, um, just, you know, it's not in great shape. So, and then also the wraparound, um, the road and then parking down on that end where the new fieldhouse would be, uh, would help to alleviate traffic, help visiting teams get in and out. And just, uh, you know, officials, it would provide a parking area for their buses. Uh, right now, you know, where everybody tries to park right there at that one gate, I know on Fridays they let the officials park there, uh, just 'cause I have some experience with that. Uh, but you also have the ambulance that parks there, uh, and then the visiting buses and the home buses. And there's really just, other than taking up parking for citizens, people going to the game, we just don't have that available right now.
I do know there were a number of issues, uh, you know, American Disabilities Act, they're at Goodlow.
Mm-hmm.
Um, those are, are gonna be required to be fixed, so.
Yes.
I think now's the time to do all this together, you know. That, we're gonna be responsible, you know, for a, a lot of work there to comply, you know, with the ADA.
Yeah, and that's, that's what the, the, I mean, and even by, by the survey, eh, it wa- eighty, eighty-one percent? Eighty-two percent of the citizens in the survey said, let's just, let's do it, you know? Uh, I, I know the district, kind of what I learned, we learned, has a history of, you know, we're trying to make do, we're trying to renovate, we're trying to adjust this building to make it fit our needs. And the committee just, we kind of said, especially on this specific issue, let's, you know, we need mostly new. Um, so I agree with that. And then the ADA concerns, of course, just make it, I mean, so even one thing that's pointed out, I think Gabe touched on the, the slope of the ramps for the home side, it's not just that. If you're going from, and Ms. Friel's, if I'm wrong, you're going from the concession stand under the, the press box, just towards the stands, that slope is no longer acceptable. It's a slight slope, you wouldn't even think it's that much, but it's, it's no longer qualified under ADA. So is that, okay, make sure I understood that right?
I have one, are you done? Okay, I have one more question about the, uh, transportation building, and it might've been on the maps here, but they were kind of small.
I know, and that's, that's what's hard is.
That's okay. Where exactly is the new transportation building? Where do they plan to?
Okay, so when he was talking about that, I kind of whispered, laser it, you know? So, uh, that's okay, he didn't hear me, he's, he's busy, he's in his zone. Let me show you real quick, if I can get back there. Sorry, yeah, you may have to turn around, 'cause I know y'all's screen is not, I don't get to change it. Let me go real quick.
It's actually directly off of Bell's Chapel Road closest to the, where the Ag Center entrance is at. And that road will actually be a double, a double-use road.
Yeah, so there's the, there's the.
It's actually even further south by about a hundred yards than the actual Ag building is. It'll be, it'll butt up against the road on Bell's Chapel.
Yeah, so there's, there's the new Ag building, that would be the new transportation building closer to Bell's Chapel here. Currently it sits right in there, where the, is that, or further up here, it's right there. Yeah, so in the, okay, so somebody asked, what's another point of alleviate, or moving it, uh, that brought, was brought up, was it allows more home parking at Goodlow?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am? Alright.
So I, I, Goodlow Stadium's great, all those things have to be done. Nobody mentioned restrooms, that's the only thing that you hear about whenever you talk about Goodlow Stadium. New restrooms, new restrooms, new restrooms, new restrooms, no more outhouses, right? So I think that everybody understands that. But I think that the thing that's kind of been glossed over and really nobody's asked a question about is really the middle school. Right now at our middle school, we have sixteen hundred students at that school and it's almost at double its capacity of what we should be doing and what the average is around this area for anywhere. And not only do we need the facility, but if we don't do something about the facility, we're about to ask a lot of people, a lot of people are gonna ask themselves to leave, because it's just hard. It, it's hard on a teacher, on the staff. I challenge you, when this mess goes away, to go and watch a lunch period in that building. I challenge you as a citizen, take fifteen minutes and you'll turn around and you'll walk back out, because you will be, your breath will be taken away at the challenge that it is to harness those kids just for a period to have lunch. Um, I know that they've tried several things to try to change some of those things, um, as to how many kids are in there at a time, but time doesn't allow, and the passing periods, no matter how you try to rearrange them, it doesn't function for that facility. Community, get involved. It, it, everybody wants to point, it's eleven dollars a month. And, and on average, let me say on average, some, it's a little bit more for everybody else, but I would challenge you, go spend a little bit of time in, in any one of these buildings that we're talking about, at any, any facility that we're looking at. We are behind the curve and have the same expectations of everybody in the rest of the state doing with subpar facilities. And we need to change that and get back on top of the deal at a small fraction of a cost.
I, I'd like to respond or follow up on that real quick. Um, uh, when I initially took the survey, May of last year, and the questions specific for the current middle school, I was a respondent who actually was saying, let's just renovate what we have and continue to make it work. Um, had a lot of different reasons for that. Um, my personal reason for that was I didn't want to, uh, split the talent between east and west. I wanted the one campus. Um, my group that I was, um, pa- well, I was, it wasn't paired, there was probably about five of us there, but my group was very diverse. Uh, I had a, a bus driver in my group, uh, but specifically, uh, Mr. Seabream and I had a, uh, a middle school science teacher in my group. They both turned me around on my initial opinion, initial belief, uh, simply because, uh, they gave me their perspective. And I, he, I was even a little resistant to both at first. Um, but, uh, hearing Hannah tell me what she had to deal with on a day-to-day basis as a middle school teacher, um, one, I'm glad I did not become a middle school teacher. Uh, but then two, knowing that my student, that my son would be going there, I don't want him to be a part of quote-unquote the problem or... So I was actually turned around on that. So I, I do, uh, I, I did want to add my personal belief and personal feeling and point of view on, uh, on what you just said, so thank you.
What is the timeframe on a, to build that school, that middle school? Anybody got an idea?
Yes.
Stephen?
Could you, could you approach Mike, please?
Okay, sorry. Sorry. Um, it would take, it's gonna take between six and twelve months for design, and then it's gonna take eighteen to twenty-four months to construct. It's from the date that the bond is passed from, from May of twenty-two, so twenty twenty-five.
And tell us who you are.
Oh, sorry, I'm Steve Halsey with Corgan, one of the consultants that helped work with the committee.
I know who you are.
Do we have any, do we have any money in that for inflation? We're dealing with inflation now pretty heavily.
Absolutely, yes. That is part of the cost analysis that we went through and the, and the surveying to cover that, because you're right, inflation right now is, um, as everybody knows, is very high.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. And just, sorry, I don't want to interrupt if you have more questions, but what, it, just, just standing back here, while Mr. Seabream was talking and, and Gabe was talking and, 'cause you guys are more experienced with the middle school, I have, we have our committee right here, and, and, and you can just hear our moms, middle school moms, and they're just, yep, 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 yep. So I, I want to emphasize, we are here to represent them, the committee as a whole, and I could stand up here, I know we're not, for two or three more hours with all of the stories and all of the concerns from our entire committee. Uh, I made it a point, Gabe made a point, you know, we had our table work that we did, we, we, I would get them started, I would go talk to every table, because once we knew we were the co-chairs. And, and I tried to talk to everyone I could on the tour, uh, and, and at every meeting. And that was, you know, get those stories in, and like I said, we, I wanted the stories, I wish I could tell you all of them. I wish I could let them tell you all of them, uh, you know, time constraints. But I can hear them, they're sitting here, yep, yep, you're right, yep, yep, you know, I think I heard amen, you know, so. Uh, we are here to represent them, so, and the community, you know, that group represents our community, so.
Do we know when there'll be a list of the priorities of these different, um,
As far as.
Projects, a list of priorities, what, which.
Priorities?
Yeah, of projects.
So my understanding and you guys, is that, you know, we, we're proposing all of these things. Um, the, the board, the lawyers, uh, is way up, the way, because of the laws, how it's packaged is, is up to the board and.
But they can't all start at the same time.
Oh, you're talking about order of, of how they're gonna be done. Now that we, the committee was not privy, is, you know, that's not a decision the committee makes, um, if anybody can speak on that.
Depends on who wins the bid, honestly. Depends on how big the horse is.
Well, that's true. Um, one of the things that, it, it will, it depends on the bond election total amounts. The district and Doug Witt, your financial advisor, and Dr. Johnson over there can answer the questions about the district, because of its valuation, is only going to be able to sell a certain dollar amount of the bonds per year. Um, don't have that dollar, dollar amount yet. As soon as that dollar amount is determined, which is based upon how much of the bond is, is approved by the voters, then we understand you have this much dollars available each year. Then administration, Mr. Friel's, um, whatever committee y'all put together will decide the priorities of the projects and will move forward. We have some ideas, but that has not been nailed down or a hundred percent determined yet until we know the limitations, because, you know, we don't, we're not, we haven't designed anything yet, we've just done these sketches and ideas and the designs don't start until you have voter approval to have money to pay for all of them. So the day after they start, then we'll start doing that process.
Right, and I think that's why it was covered on, on the slide with the tax impact, that it said subsequent bonds would be issued for twenty-three and twenty-four. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And we have no idea what the interest rates or anything will be on those at that time. So when these bonds are approved, we agree, we know now or have an idea now, 'cause it'll be now. And then, but we have no idea what it'll be in the following years.
Um, I can let, um, Mr. Johnson or, um, Doug Witt from SAMCO tell you the assumptions they put in there for the interest rates.
Okay.
Get some of this out of the way.
Good evening, it's good to be here. I'm standing in for Brian Grubbs, uh, my business partner. Uh, we're covering plenty of these meetings, uh, as we speak. Uh, with respect to interest rates, we, of course, in the projections that we give to you, we use very, very conservative interest rates to build in the fact that interest rates could go up. So for example, to, this week we're selling bonds for less than two and a half percent, and yet we're using three and a quarter top percent, uh, on projections. So when the bond, uh, is approved in May, we would sell at least the first installment of those bonds in July, August time period. Uh, so we're a very close timeframe between now and setting that first rate. The rates on the latter bonds that, that we want to issue as we financially feasibly can issue them, uh, over time as your tax base changes, uh, those rates obviously, like all rates, will be determined at, at that time. We do have techniques that we utilize, uh, to protect districts from rising interest rates. Uh, we have methods that we utilize and types of sales. Uh, at the end of the day, the conclusion that we can reach at this type of meeting is that we are using very conservative interest rate assumptions, conservative tax base assumptions, uh, conservative, um, debt model, uh, assumptions in order to project a tax rate, because at the end of the day, the number one priority for us is in the financial arena, is any tax rate impact that we project is that we come in at or below that. And so that is the number one priority of us, uh, for the district in analyzing this. At sometimes we've been accused of being a little too conservative, 'cause to your point, y'all have priorities, you have needs, you have students coming in, and you're gonna want to move as fast as you can. Uh, sometimes we have to be a little bit of a check on that, just to make sure that we don't go too fast, too far, and we protect the financial interest of the district.
Thank you. Hey, just a question. Now that, uh, you've had like forty people together, you know, in, went over all these issues, you visited all the sites, how do you feel as a group? Do you feel very positive about it? Or do you feel, what, what's the, what's the consensus?
In, in terms, uh, consensus in terms of.
Yeah, how, how do you feel overall?
Well, uh, I, well, we feel multitude of things. Uh, we, we feel that the district has, again, done very well with the resources it has. I believe the average age of the, of the school buildings are actually older than what I thought. Uh, but it's still nice to be able to walk into, uh, a building and not feel that it's old. Right, um, so I, I think, um, a, a good example of that is, is, uh, when my oldest son was in elementary school, he walked, he walked into Red Oak Elementary. We did a facilities tour there on, on one Saturday, and it still looked the same. But then you also feel and learn that looks, looks can be deceiving. Uh, because, um, if you don't know about it, then you don't know about it. Uh, and unfortunately for the transportation facility, um, I think that personally, uh, everybody forgets about it. It's out of sight, it's out of mind, and as long as the bus is run, the bus is run. Uh, but then you realize that there are sixty people who use that building day-to-day, uh, and they work in, in, in that condition. Uh, as, as a manager myself, uh, I would hate for my staff to come into that. Uh, again, my personal feeling on that. Uh, as far as our, our committee is concerned, uh, again, a lot from the feedback we received, I received, uh, was, uh, there's work to be done. Uh, and that there was some, uh, some feeling that it was unfortunate that the two thousand seventeen bond did not pass, because we were really thinking that if it had this particular meeting, would not be as, uh, when, when Brian read that number out, there were gasps in here. Uh, there've been gasps every time we come up with these numbers, we talk about these numbers. Uh, we didn't, we felt that, um, we would not have to be asking for such a large bond had we had been able to, to get that particular bond passed. Uh, we would be further along than, than, than where we are now.
Do you think with the, the committee people that were there, when this, when this bond comes, there's gonna have to be a lot of word of mouth? Because typically, when a bond comes up, what you hear in the community are the people that are against it. The people that are happy and think, oh, this'll, this, this is good. You don't see them out knocking on doors or telling their neighbors or going on Facebook, oh, this is great. You see it some, but people that are not happy are usually much more vocal. Do you think the people on the committee would help be vocal? Help us get the word out about what this is really all about? Not just, your taxes are gonna go up because the school wants to fix the stadium. That's what, that's what will go out if we don't have a large number of people helping to get the word out in the community. Do you think this would, your committee people would be good at that and want to help with that?
I'm hearing a lot of ahems behind me.
So at, at our last meeting, you know, we, we, we said, the, the committee, as soon as you guys decide, whatever you decide, whenever it goes on a school board, the committee's dissolved. Um, and so we knew that, and so. the committee's dissolved. And so we knew that. And so, you know, I can no longer reach people through Beth and through those. So we gave a survey. That meeting, I don't know the exact number, there probably wasn't the full 48 there. But I popped up a survey, you know, scan this, let us know if you're interested. Galley, sorry, tally and gave myself would like to continue that charge in some way or another. And 22 people on the spot filled out my survey of questions of, you know, I need your phone number, I need an email, not ROISD for those that are employees. And I need, you know, we listed four areas. Where would you like to serve? And we're going to kind of split those up and lead them moving forward. And the response from the committee was great. I've already had two people in that, you know, a couple of weeks ago who heard about that group from committee members. Hey, can you send me that survey? I'd like to be involved. So, you know, we hope to grow that. And there's definitely going to be a push.
Good.
Was there a reason to lump it all together rather than divide it so that it would be smaller bonds that you could choose?
Okay, so that, that's kind of what we were talking about earlier. It won't be lumped, is my understanding. And it can't be by law, by the new law. So there's, is my understanding, feel free to interrupt Steve and. Basically, anything that's on a school building, the new gym, the renovations to the elementaries, the new middle school, the CTE would be in a big main package. They all have to go together. Then there would probably be a Goodlow on its own. Then there would probably be a transportation on its own, and then the athletic facilities. So I think, I don't want to put words in mouths, but generally in the committee, we discuss that. You know, we want that. They, you know, kind of in the meetings is we're looking at basically four, four props maybe. But once again, that's up to people not in my realm of the world.
Again, it comes back to buy-in. And I'll, I'm going to keep beating this drum as long as we're having meetings before the bond comes out. It takes buy-in. It takes community members. If you're a community member who has, okay, we're talking about facilities at two elementary schools, we're talking about Goodlow Stadium, we're talking about the high school additions, right? So if you just take, if you just move the elementary stuff to the side, and you talk about how many kids go through band, how many kids go through football, how many kids go through baseball, how many kids go through any athletic program that comes to the school, dance, drill team, what have you. Put your $11 in the pot and let's move on.
Yeah. And, and you know, kind of what we're talking about, and this is going to answer that question as far as Ms. Peterson, who's behind us and who's going to support us. The number of people that came up to us at that last meeting or after, or even a little bit before as things were discussed, how do we move forward if it's proposed, if it goes on the ballot may? You know, people come up, hey, I got East Ridge PTA people. They're with you. They want to back this. I can rally them. They're willing to do what it takes. I got a high school booster club. I'm in that. They want to help. I got this group. All across the district, groups of parents that want to help.
That's great. Because that's what it's going to take.
Absolutely. All right.
Did your committee like give different scenarios of, like with what you put together, you decided on middle school? Was there another option that you guys looked at?
Okay, so, well, we decided, we went through everything. So it all started with they, the administration sent out a list of principals. What are your needs? You know, obviously, we didn't get that for like, well, we did. We got principals, department heads, transportation, the high school, all the principals got to fill out, what do you need? So that's where we started. We looked at that, looked at those needs. Some things immediately like, no, you know, as a community, that can go in M and O. That's, that's repair operational. You know, they'll find a way. Things were cut. And then kind of the bigger picture items were discussed, presented to us. And then throughout the whole meeting process, we had tables. So we had, I was table six or nine?
Nine.
Nine. I don't remember.
I sat next to you.
Oh, okay, you know. So I was table nine. And so, you know, most of the discussion would happen at a table. Well, at the December meeting, when the time came to, you know, we've got to get a consensus. So we, as a table, would agree. And up to that time, that's when I really got to walk around and talk to people. My table knew where I was. I was with them. Our table was pretty tied on what we wanted. So what we did, each table, and this goes back to school and elementary, gets a big post-it. You write on there what the bond looks like for your table. Okay? And so then we post it on the wall. We find new middle school is on every single list. Check, we're done. We find new CTE, every single list, out of nine lists. We found most other things were on six to eight lists. You know, maybe somebody at this table decided, oh, they're not for that. So we found all the things that were on six or more lists. Right? And we said, that is pretty good. You know, that is, that is a majority. That's a consensus. Then we found all the things that were not. And we held a individual person vote. And what Corrigan and Mr. Halsey, Halsey, I'm sorry. Okay, just making sure. I've never said it out loud. I read it. You know, he said 80% is what we need to, this, this, this group represents the community. You need to clear 80% to get it on, on your final package. So as we did that process, you know, Beth's over there just writing a new post-it. Everything that we picked. So that's how that went. Did that answer?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you feel your committee was well represented as far as staff, community members? Do you feel like there was enough of everybody represented to represent what the community will then vote on in the election?
Um.
Or was it weighted more with staff?
It's hard in a community like ours, right? Biggest employer in this town is who? Is us, you know? We all live here. We all have kids here. There were staff. I mean, and you can, the eight lists on the website, who was staff and their connection, if they're staff and parent and, so, I mean, yeah, there were staff. I know that we tried to not overwhelmingly have staff. But I think, do you know, do you have any statistics on that specifically?
I have a question. It's a breakdown of everybody.
Okay.
Different age, from different groups, by elementary, middle high school.
Okay.
By ethnicity and by where they live.
Okay.
And that's kind of what I'm asking. Because I know you have littles.
Yes.
And I know you said you've got middle and high school.
Yes.
Because everybody's perspective is different. I've got an elementary going into that middle school thing.
Yes.
But by the time it gets finished.
Exactly.
I'm so scared. By the time it's done, he won't benefit from this.
So, okay.
But somebody's child will.
So let me, let me first apologize. Because you said, you asked me how I feel, and I missed that. And I'm looking at Beth for statistics. The answer is yes.
Okay.
I did not have a single campus that I didn't have two or three people come up to me to discuss that campus. Right? So every school was represented. Every, as far as demographics, absolutely.
Okay.
You know, as far as age range, I feel like yes. We had a student that graduated ROISD last year. Is an employee as well. Looks at Little Honk, friend of ours. And then we had several people that were just community members, business owners. So I feel like yes. All right.
Do you agree? I mean?
Oh, absolutely.
Again, my example, just from my table alone, I was turned based off of the point of view, being able to, that was provided to me from other people. So my table alone had a transportation employee, a school bus driver, a property owner who has no kids in the district at all. Their kids are my age. And then you have myself with an elementary and a, and a high school student. We were all able to bring our perspectives together and listen to each other. I imagine that was done on purpose. And again, I've, we heard these conversations at every table. And then also in our larger discussions as well. So I believe that yes, to answer your question, this was a well-put, well-together, well-put-together group of different backgrounds, different situations in order to come together and present to you this.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
No, I'll just say, thank you.
Yeah.
You know, thank you for.
We do appreciate.
The whole, whole committee. You know, getting together and coming up with recommendations, what y'all foresee we need. You see the growth around us. You know it's headed our way. You look at some of the models that are out there that, through the economic development, you know, as far as how Red Oak is going to be seen within the next 10 years. And it's, you know, from a, I've been here 50 something years. So from a little bitty town to where we are now has been incredible, but it's really fast-tracking into the future. Really fast. You know, over the last 10 years, you look at the growth that Red Oak has seen. So all we're going to do is grow. And that's where we got to be prepared for it. If we're not, we're going to be in trouble. But I just want to say thank you to you and the entire committee for applying your time and the efforts behind it. We thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I know Brian, thanks you. Thank you to all the committee members. Thank you to the principals, the administration. Thank you to you all for listening to us and giving us this opportunity. It actually has been fun, believe it or not, to learn all this and go through this process.
Gabe and I just, just the other night prepping, we were like, we're back in college. This is great.
I'd like to echo that too as well. As an educator, educator, sitting in a classroom and you watch those students have an aha moment and then problem solve and come together and come up with solutions, it was the exact same thing. Watching all of the adults pouring in all their time, really putting their minds together. It's just like students too. There were some arguments and that's okay. Because that's how we, that's how we come to consensus. Is you can't all 100% agree in order to get somewhere. So they, they stuck it out. They were just intentional in doing what was best recommended for the students, and they kept focusing on that. So I cannot thank you enough, just sitting there watching you and, and seeing how you truly, you didn't just give in to give in. You absolutely worked through what was best for the students. And I just applaud each and every way for that. So I certainly appreciate y'all.
Okay. We're now going to move into the public comment section of our agenda. The board welcomes comments from citizens who have completed public comment forms this evening. And they were accepted prior to the start of the meeting. They are not transferable to other speakers. Please advise that the information shared in public comment is the opinion of the individual speaker, not the district. Two minutes per person has been allotted for public comments. Please keep all public comments related to school district governance and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student issue, you're encouraged to utilize the district's grievance procedures provided in the board policies on the district website. Finally, remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not publicly, that are not properly displayed on the agenda. So we have several people that have signed up. When you come up to, when I call your name, if you'll come up to the podium, give your, state your name and your address, and then you'll have two minutes to speak. Do we, do we have the timer tonight? Okay, I can't see. The lights are this light. Okay, so our first person is Michael Mendoza.
Good evening. Name's Michael Mendoza. Address 232 Stone Gateway, Red Oak, Texas. And I want you to know, I have no real big motive to be here. I have no children in this district. I have no grandchildren in this district. My grandchildren are all in California. Okay? I didn't know Red Oak existed on the map at all. And Mr. Knight, it was a little city before, and you saw it grow. It's still a little city, let me tell you. Okay? My, my real concern here, I'm on the Red Oak Chamber of Commerce, and Clint was who motivated me through an email to come out here today. I live in Coal Manor Estates, if you're familiar with that new development. And I'll tell you, there's a lot of kids in there. And I'll also tell you this. I look at what I see here right now, and I look at a school district. I grew up with cartoons. I know that's not a big deal anymore. But I grew up with cartoons. And I'll tell you, this school district to me looks like the Flintstones. I look at other school districts that look like the Jetsons. And I think these bonds are so far outdated, it should have happened a long time ago. There should be no discussion of renovations. There should be discussion of competition. Because the numbers that I see in the growth that are coming up into this school district area are way underestimated. I could see just driving around what's coming. And what's going to happen here is that we are going to have, either going to attract people or not. The people are still coming. We're going to attract the right people into this school district or the wrong people. But the people are coming. We're going to attract the right employees to this school district or the wrong ones, because you're going to need them. And it's going to all have to do with how this district looks, appears, and performs. And right now, it is not a pretty picture. So I just wanted to express my opinion. I don't have a vested interest. I don't have kids here in the district, nor will I. Too old for that stuff now. But we're going to be here for life. We're going to be here a long time. And these students are going to be our future of this community. And I'm not going anywhere. And I don't want to see a bad community. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Kayla Maddox.
Good evening. I'm Kayla Maddox. I live at 112 Richard Lane. I'm a parent of three kids. One, one of my children have already graduated through Red Oak. I have two that are currently at the high school. I was honored to be a part of this group, of this committee. I 100% support this bond recommendation that was presented to you tonight. But I want to emphasize this. This passing of this bond, if it gets there, will not benefit my kids. So I'm not voting for this for my kids. I'm voting for the future students of Red Oak ISD. Thank y'all for your time.
Having a hard time here. Audrey Taylor Smith?
She, we knew she might have been. She let me know she might have been.
You want me to read them?
Chelsea Brantley?
I am Chelsea Brantley, 215 Morning Star Lane. I am a mother. We have a household of seven. I have two of my own birth children and as well as three of my stepchildren that came to live with us in 2020 when their mother passed away. So we have five teenagers. Again, like Kayla said, this bond will probably never benefit our children. I have one in the middle school and four in the high school. I feel passionate about this bond because I think it's speaking life into our children about how we feel about their future and how important their education is. And I feel like it's growing more apparent to our students how we feel. how we feel about them and their futures, when they look around in the hallways and the schools, and what is, what, what is that message that we're spen- sending to them? And so, I know personally what it's like when somebody invests in your future. And I feel like that's why it's very passionate for me, um, that we invest in our, our children and our community. Personally, my eighth grade daughter does not have a science teacher, still halfway into the year. And it makes me wonder, and it's become more apparent tonight, that maybe the reason my daughter doesn't have an eighth grade science teacher is because we're not able to recruit those people here, because the community has not supported our children with these bonds. And so, it's something I'm very passionate about, and I feel very firmly that it's important that we speak life into these children, and let them know how important they are, and how important their educations are.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Clint Woodward.
Good evening, my name is Clint Woodward, I live at 2233 Cinnamon Springs in Glen Heights. I am the president and CEO of the Red Oak Area Chamber of Commerce. And prior to that, I spent three and a half years at Red Oak ISD in the administration with the Student Nutrition Department. Uh, I also served on this committee, and I feel there are some definite things that we need to highlight, why this bond is so important. We've talked about growth, we haven't talked about the economic development of our community. We have some fantastic things that are coming in. We have Google that's coming in, we have a Compass Data Center. We've got two of the world's leading aerospace companies right here already in Red Oak, with over 1,200 employees, and trying to hire 500 more. Economic development is very important to our community, and we are growing at a rapid and healthy rate. The community has done wonderful things to promote this. The city has worked on their water and sewer improvements. We have new sports facilities for city people. Old Villa Road is being expanded, it's gonna be six lanes. And new projects like Loop Nine are, are on the horizon. However, we have a lot to, lot to ask for from the school district. We are overcrowded. We have facilities that frankly are unsafe. We have issues with compliance, that UIL could come down, come in and shut us down at any point, and lose all sports in this community. How would that stop our economic engine? This is a very important bond, much like the school district. School district has been financially responsible for a long time. This committee was financially responsible as well. We left stuff back on the table. We did not go the highest route on all these pathways. We wanted to be just as responsible as the school has been, and that is why I wholeheartedly support this bond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Holly Fartroy.
Fartroy.
Thank you.
You're welcome, told you she should let me read.
Hello, my name is Holly Fartroy, I live at 120 Garden Grove Lane. Um, I've lived in Red Oak for about seven years. I moved here as a single mom, um, bought my first home in Red Oak, I was really proud of that. From a small town in Oklahoma, so Red Oak to me has that small-town feel, even though it's growing. Um, but I was a part of this committee, I'm also an active, um, you know, person I would say within the community. I'm on the middle school PTA, my children are very active. I have two middle schoolers here in the eighth grade, they're twins. Um, both are very active, um, as well. And it was a pleasure to be on the committee, um, going on the tours. I was just overwhelmed, um, at what I saw. And, um, I just want to say that I 100% support this. I will get out in my personal community, um, and speak to the members in my community. Um, I'm on the HLA, part of the HLA, uh, for my, um, community. Um, I'm on one of the committees there as well. And so, I'll definitely, um, get out and tell people about this, um, to get out and support this bond, if it's passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's good to note that Holly, uh, planned to move to Midlothian, and she came back to Red Oak because of Shutman Elementary. I just want, that, that needs to be on record, because she, she dipped on Midloth to come back here. She was building a house, canceled the contract and came back. Thanks, Rob Waller.
Anthony Modesto.
Good evening, I'm Anthony Modesto, I live at 802 Rochelle Drive here in Red Oak. I've lived here since 1996. I'm retired military, so I've seen a lot of the world, I've seen a lot of schools. I put my kids through a lot of those schools, most of them here in, in Texas. And Red Oak has always been top-notch school. But we are falling behind, and we need this bond, we needed this bond several years ago. So, I'd just like everyone to know that I support this bond for my other 100 kids that ride bus nine. Thank you.
Donna Knatt.
Donna Knatt, 123 Carol Lane, Red Oak, Texas. I am a mom of alumni from Red Oak High School. I am a graduate with 43 seniors in my graduating class compared to now. I have no children in the school, no grandchildren in the school, but I worked for the district for 32 years, and I saw the different things change over the years. And I definitely, my office was at the Cape Building, so that was my number-one priority of seeing that those kids get the ample time that they need, as well as everything else that we put together for the bond. So, I want to say that, you know, I'm here, I'm retired, I'm on a fixed income now, but I'm gonna vote for this, because it's for all of our future that'll be the leaders of Red Oak one time. And I want them to be just as proud as a Red Oak Hawk is this mama is. Thank you.
Robert McIntosh.
Good evening, I really was hoping I didn't have to follow down tonight, but, you know, there we are. Uh, my name is Robert McIntosh, uh, I live at 832 Linnan Drive. And I have, uh, lived in Red Oak since 2000. Worked for Red Oak ISD since 2009. And I am a Red Oak High School graduate, oh, four. And, uh, met my wife in high school, actually. Earlier this year, uh, took my kids to the sixth-grade orientation, I have two kids, I got a middle schooler and a high schooler. And, uh, I showed them where my wife and I first met. And, uh, I thought they would think that was pretty cool, but for the record, they could care less. They were more interested in meeting all the friends after the summer break. But, uh, on the behalf of my family and I, uh, we fully support this bond, as it's been presented to you tonight. And for the record, I work, uh, in transportation, and I, uh, joined the committee, you know, knowing there was needs across the district, of course, but, um, to say I wasn't a little biased, uh, for the support for the transportation part, I'd be lying to you. But I really didn't need to be there for that. All it really took was a walk through that facility, when we did our facility tour, and I think that pretty much sold everyone on the idea that we needed a new one, so. Uh, thank you for allowing me to be a part of it, and again, fully support the bond, thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Paul Schwade.
I hope there's not a Schwade, because my name's actually Schmood. Just kidding. Uh, my name is Paul Schmood, I live at 161 Creekview Drive, uh, here in Red Oak. And this is the first time I've ever gotten a chance to research and be a part of something like this, and I appreciate all the hard work that went into this. I do find it a little bit strange that there's a sense of urgency for this bond, but the soonest that anything could happen is three years, that's pretty far out there. There was also the admission that there's gonna be a need for additional bonds. And in the presentation, we're using words like projected growth and proposed tax increases, and to-be-determined cost, when the bond passes, if it does, how much. Well, one of the things that is certain, is that $230 million over 30 years at 3% interest is almost half a billion dollars. So, if we were to rename this bill, excuse me, this bond, the first of three half-a-billion-dollar bonds, I think we're gonna have a little trouble getting, uh, the kind of buy-in that you guys want. We're not unhappy, Mrs. Peterson. We just don't approve that right now is the best time to pay pandemic inflation prices and rates. The cost of everything has gone through the roof. So, it's not that this doesn't need to happen, but perhaps now is not the time. I also, I wonder why it is that the maintenance was omitted. That's an option for us. I have a house that was built in 77. Because I have to pay for it, I can't just jump at the first opportunity to pay money, because I'm the one that has to do it. I look at maintenance and fixing the things. We need more options. Can we please stop with this proposal, bring more information back to the table, and look at it again from another optic? I would really appreciate that, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dawn Little.
Hello, my name is Dawn Little. I live at 441 Country Ridge Lane in Red Oak. First of all, um, I married someone who went to Red Oak High School. Um, I have three children that came up through the school district. Um, they're all graduated now. Um, I have, um, I started out as a substitute teacher in the school district, and I'm also an RN. Um, so now I have been teaching for 10 years in the district, and I am a CTE teacher. I teach, um, in the health sciences. Um, my family also has a small business in Red Oak. Um, we own our house, um... So, my children will not benefit from this, but I do want them to come back to Red Oak and be proud of their alma mater. Um, so, Red Oak is going to grow. We just need to be smart in the way we help it grow. And I feel like there's not really gonna be a good time to start spending money to help our, um, facilities be better and greater for our students to come to school and get an education. Um, so, I am in support of this board allowing our taxpayers to vote on this bond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Crystal Dozier.
Hello, I am Crystal Dozier, I live at 128 Lassiter Drive. And I just wanted to say that I was grateful to be a part of the committee as well. I learned a lot, I've only been in the district since 2018, so, like I said, a lot was new to me. Um, what really stuck out to me was the facilities, and they are subpar. Brian hit that nail on the head. Uh, I came from other district nor- in North Texas, and they had state-of-the-art facilities, and the kids were treated as though they had state-of-the-art facilities. Um, it's, it's actually embarrassing to go to Goodlow and to see the facilities there, and the facilities the refs use, the facilities that the visitors have to use if they're in a wheelchair, they can't even sit in the stands, they have to sit on the track. So, that's a huge violation, obviously, the playground issue is huge for me too. But I do want to point out that the district has done an amazing job with their facilities ma- maintenance, and put a lot of effort into that. We are at a point where they cannot keep putting any more maintenance into it. So, it's gonna have to be new stuff, it's gonna have to be torn down to get new stuff. But the district has done really well to manage money, to do it responsibly, and to, um, and take really good care of our kids. So, I appreciate that, I appreciate the time for the board, and I fully support this bond.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ginger McClure.
I'm Ginger McClure, I live at 119 Credit Drive. Um, I have lived and worked in Red Oak for over 20 years, I work at the high school. I, um, I was also a single mom and bought my first home just a long, long time ago. Uh, my son graduated from Red Oak, in fact, he graduated, um, from this building, thanks to people who were willing to vote for a bond that allowed him to spend his senior year in a building that actually fit his senior class. And so, I'm really grateful for that, and I don't really actually have anything tying me to Red Oak anymore. My family's not, I'm not from here, my family's not from here, my son's grown up. I'm here because the schools are great, and I love the community, I love the school. And I want to continue to be proud of Red Oak. I mean, several people have already said, when we did those facility tour, it was so embarrassing. I, I've been to a lot of football games, but I don't like to use public restroom, so I'd never actually been in those restroom, and I'd heard people talk about them, but, I mean, I just can't express how terrible they are. And there were just so many other things like that, that... We have a lot of great things, if we want to continue to be great, we're gonna have to spend some money to do it. Uh, I was on the committee too, thank you.
Thank you.
Having a hard time with this first name, sorry. LaShad Franklin.
Good evening, I'm LaChastity Franklin, um, 133 Lake Trail, Red Oak, Texas. I am the proud mom of three kids, one who graduated from here, um, one at the middle school, and one at the elementary. I apologize, they are all spread out, did not plan that. Um, I'm here as a parent, as well as I'm a sub in the district. Um, I consider myself pretty active, I see the principals, they know me probably on a first-name basis. Um, just being a part of this committee opened my eyes to a lot of things that, although you're a parent, you see these things, you go to the school, you don't know all this is going on, you don't see how crowded it was. My first introduction was sixth grader, my sixth grader, um, he had to, he has to walk from the sixth-grade center to band. Um, that walk is long, I'm not going to sugarcoat it, when it rains, they do feel the rain. It's not covered all the way over, and meanwhile, you're carrying a band instrument and a backpack. So, as a parent, that was alarming for me. If it was a long walk for me, his legs are way smaller than mine, I can only imagine. So, as a parent, a taxpayer, I definitely support this bond, and it's not to just benefit my kids, it's the kids coming into the district. That's who our future is, is the kids. It's long overdue, and it only takes for you to tour this facility, you hear everyone talking about that, they made a big difference. So, I suggest anyone who hasn't, or who may not fully believe in this, to try this, taking a tour of the district, it'll open your eyes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else from board members? We're not having closed session tonight.
Just thank you one more time, I, I appreciate the time and, and the effort, um, that you, that the committee put in, but thank you for everybody who is online watching right now. If, I'm gonna get you in trouble. If you would like to schedule a tour, Kevin Frills and Brenda Sanford would be proud to give you a tour, so that you can see what, what we're proposing and why we're proposing. Thank y'all. I believe in you.
The time is 8:58 PM and this meeting is adjourned. Thank y'all.
Thank you for coming.
Thank y'all.